The month of May as a known May. May? Sorry. No. That's the month of May. Whereas, the city of Lake Village is keen to develop an implemented program to create or expand pollinator-friendly habitat on public and private land. The galvanized community still adopts sustainable pollinator-friendly land management practices. And whereas, the city of Lake Village is in a unique position, assists significantly increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices and by sympathizing with citizens' take direction and meaningful action on their own property. And whereas, the formative period for the establishment of pollinators and other insect species and the many songbirds and other urban wildlife species which depend upon them occurs in late spring and early summer when they emerge from dormancy and require plants as crucial forage habitat. And these opportunities are dramatically reduced with early spring litter removal and grass mowing. Now, there here further resolved that for the duration of the month of May, the city of Lake Village should suspend the enforcement of Chapter 82, Article 15, weeds and not just growth and voluntarily delayed homeowner lawn care practices until June, allowing pollinator species to emerge and early climbing grasses and forage habitat to establish which may result in the ground cover exceeding established ordinance type restrictions. And that during the month of May, the city of Lake Village shall not issue citations for excessive weed programs. On this 15th day of May, 2023.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
I just believe knowledge is key. This is something that's important to our community. It should be in place before May begins. Burndale has a program. They have signs with the policy of use of this fundraising opportunity. But to begin this in the middle of May, when for the past thirty-two comedy weeks, in the E-News letter, the ordinance for grass cutting has been in there saying, if you don't cut the grass within forty-eight hours, you'll be fined. So we're just continuing on. We're not on the same page here, so that's what I agree with my own. We're going to do what we can to keep the plan and prepare so that it begins after beginning of the month and that everyone knows.
I agree with you. Next one for the proclamation. Anyone else have any? Okay. Pro proclamation to the December 19th, the Union Year of Juneteenth Awareness Day. Whereas, Americans of all colors, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share in a common love of respecting freedom as well as determination to protect their right to freedom through democratic institutions by which the tenants of freedom are guaranteed and protected. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1963, bringing those enslaved in the South. However, Southern slave owners ignored that order. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas and enforced the president's order, bringing the enslaved African-Americans two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. Whereas, this year marks the third Juneteenth event entitled Unity in the Community, a celebration of cultural diversity that being held in Lake Village. An event that will feature art, entertainment, music, food trucks, unity walk, and much more. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Michael Kellygare, together with Mayor Pro Tim Bruce Cantor, Councilmember Jalen Jennings, Councilmember Barbara Canes, and Councilmember Karen Miller of the city of Lake Village hereby declare the 19th of June, 2023 to be Juneteenth Awareness Day in Lake Village. Be it further resolved that we express our appreciation to the Juneteenth Task Force and the DDA Promotions Committee. We encourage all to recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth, support the continued celebration of Juneteenth Day to provide an opportunity for all people to learn more about the past and better understand the experiences that have shaped the nation. And encourage the people of the city of Lake Village to observe Juneteenth Day and participate in ceremonies, activities, and programs attached to this 15th day of May, 2023. Roll call.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller. Mayor Garrett. Councilmember Jennings. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Motion carry. Thank you.
Next, I have motions to accept the consent agenda.
I have to defer to the caller.
It's not supposed to be in the actually taken out. That's why it's not on the agenda.
It is on my agenda. Juneteenth wasn't, but that one was. Okay.
I mean, I have an updated package, so I don't know why it wasn't on. So next is a consent agenda. Anybody like to make a motion for a consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a second. It's been moved in second. There is no discussion. But Karen, you wanted something out then?
Yeah, I wanted to call this dispersment report. See.
So for that particular motion.
Motion.
I'm asking.
So the original motion maker would have amended the motion.
Right, so you need to make part of the agenda with the exception of C.
Is there a way for the person to just make the motion without?
None has to be. It doesn't.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. For how long?
Are you making a second again? It's just a second. Can you take roll call on this?
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett. Councilmember Jennings. Motion carry.
Yes, page 40. Under Government Services. There is a payment to Continental Services for $667.80. It's OCCMA luncheon.
Yes, that is the Oakland County City Managers Association. And I belong to that. I want to tell the city managers in Oakland County their assistance for when they invite to come to these meetings each month. The cost is roughly $20 to $30 a plate to be able to go to this. And this month, Lake Village had the opportunity to host the meeting here at Michigan First with the speaker being Jennifer Bowery. And of course, we have to pay for the food upfront, and I have invoiced fifteen people that were in attendance, $20 a person for the plate. So we will have some costs that the city will be responsible for that we will be reimbursed as well. And again, I encourage you, you know, if there are things that I'm not able to answer tonight because you're asking them, you did receive the packet on Thursday evening as was asked for. If you could please in the future send your questions in advance so that we have the answers available and at hand. I'm more than happy to answer that. But when we're not able to answer them on the spot, then nobody else gets the information but council. And if you're stating that it's important for citizens to know, then it's important for you to ask those questions ahead of time so that we're prepared.
Okay, thanks. Perhaps if something like that is going on, you might want to let the council know that we were hosting.
She posted it. Yeah, we posted it. There's pictures of it.
Oh.
It was like in the E-Newsletter or something like that, but I guess, yeah.
After it was done. I'm talking about before something's going on. Revise LLC Website Software, $3,625. We are going to be asked to vote on website tonight. Is that a monthly payment? What is the what you buy is website software?
I don't have that information to give you. If you would have asked that in advance, I would have that for you tonight.
Okay. Well, we should have it as part of our discussion to know what our ongoing costs are with the company that we currently use.
I'm more than happy to answer those questions.
We're having a conversation in the middle of the.
But I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I got it.
So that I can have the answer ready to give to you.
Page 42. KD Cement. We're paying $36,927.45 for 2022 Sidewalk Repair Program. I believe that there are a lot of residents that are having issues with the cement work that was done by KD last year. So I'm wondering, are we holding money back to make sure that these issues are addressed?
That's actually incorrect. It's not with KD. It was the subcontractor that worked for ASI that they had issues with. And that money is being withheld until that is corrected.
It wasn't with the cement company?
There were separate projects that were going on. One was sidewalk. One was the road projects and driveway approaches, and these are two separate things. So.
But this is the sidewalk, and I believe I have some pictures posted on Facebook of people who have had issues with a brand-new sidewalk. So that's why I'm asking if we have held anything back for any problems that have not been cleared up.
I would have to get back to you on that. Again, if you would ask in advance, I would have an answer for you.
Yeah. Most of my questions aren't answered, so that's it. Thank you.
So we should.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
I, I, we did renew our contract.
A monthly payment.
Oh, that was, but that's not a re. That's just a thing that we, our contract comes with them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve April 2023 dispersment report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I read none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have action requests for consideration. The ordinance is rescinding Chapter 18, Article 16. Cannabis businesses.
Let me scroll down this. So this is in response to the charter, I'm sorry, the charter amendment on the last election.
Unfortunately, we can hear the feedback up here if you want to keep it out of the solo room. Thank you.
So this is in response to the charter amendment, the election results. This is repealing the amendments, or sorry, the amendments to the business ordinance with respect to cannabis businesses. This essentially reinstates the prohibition that was in effect previously prior to adopting this ordinance. There is one revision, and I'm trying to get to it in my pack. Bear with me. I realize under the repealer section that I do need to update. It's Section 2 of the proposed ordinance. I need to add sections 18285 through 18297 for that. So that change will be reflected in the second reading.
Sorry, 18285 to what?
18285 through 18297. I just need to repeal those because there were more sections in the new ordinance, in the previous ordinance than in this new one, so.
Thank you.
So the introduction date and then adoption publication, like all those years are going to be changed, right?
Yeah.
I need a motion. This is the second reading? I'm sorry.
So if there's, under ordinance, in order to, under our ordinance, our charter, in order to amend an ordinance, it requires two readings, a first and second reading. So this is the first reading. If it's approved this evening, then the second reading will come before council, presumably at the next regular meeting. So June 26.
Make a motion to.
Prove the.
Yeah, to repeal the campus ordinance.
Is there a second? A second? Move the second. Is there any further discussion? I read none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett. Councilmember Jennings. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Canes. Motion carry to approve the ordinance amendment.
Next up is the website update recommendation.
There are two websites that we have. Aptige gave their proposal to you last month, and then it was asked to really check into Revise as well. I did include Aptige website examples for you to be able to go and look at, so hopefully you've had a moment to do that. And then these are the costs from Revise. They can offer a lot of the same things that Aptige can. You just don't have the same ability for things to transfer. You load it one time and it goes through to all the different social feeds out there. You'd have to be uploaded everything. It's kind of like I know. A car thing down here on the revised section that you can pick and choose from. But for, if you're comparing apples to apples, even though we have revised currently, the ability to post things as quickly as we can. Annual fees for revise are $3,625.
That's what we just paid.
But it's not updated to what we would need it to be updated to. So those annual fees could jump up anywhere from $4,000 to, you know, we include a custom mobile app in there, such as what Aptige provides, that automatically puts you over top of what Aptige's prices were. On the search, create search feature, curates search feature, facility reservation system forms, any of the different things that would be available through Aptige are significant cost increase from what Aptige has presented to us. So staff's recommendation is to select Aptige to do the website update and create the mobile app that goes with that, that citizens will be able to use and have access to the activities or events or alerts or any of the above from the proposal that was given last month. So that would be $6,500 to set it up, and then an annual fee of $6,200, which is possible. The rate would be locked in with no more than a possible five percent increase per year. So that is the recommendation from staff.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to select the Aptige, Aptige appro, ah, to select the Aptige proposal and authorize the city administrator to sign the mat for service agreement with Aptige.
Is there a second?
Sorry, can't.
It's been moved a second. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
All right.
Does Revise have, they don't have an app, though, for push notifications, correct?
Um, they do not.
Yeah, because I think that's the big grand effect.
What do we, what do they use right now? Where do I get text from when there's a change on the website?
That does come through Revise. It's not the same. It is a similar feature, but again, creating the mobile app that people can use that is very friendly. Those two things that are buying us from there and you want to the. And we still have a system. Something else, Revise does not offer an annual update at no charge, revision of the website, which Aptige does. So anytime that you would want to update the website through Revise, you would have to pay additional, you know, anywhere from $5,000 or up to be able to update the website.
If we're changing vendors, don't we have to go out for bid?
This is kind of, it's a service that's provided to the city.
It's $15,000.
Right.
It has to be, if it's $15,000 spend?
No. Well, expenditure is over $5,000.
I do think we should at least get one more vendor to look at. Didn't you look at MuniBit?
Oh, I did look at MuniBit. MuniBit is a company that, their prices are very low, but they are. How do I say it correctly? Their prices are reflected, and it's something that they're not looking for customers that already have websites designed. It's something that they want to do. So it really was not a fit for the city. So I think Civic Plus is also another website through Municode. I've been trying to get a vote from them. We already have Municode that we use, obviously, for our meeting agendas and output in Municode for our zoning and that sort of thing. But the costs are much higher through Civic Plus than what they are through Aptige.
I think, though, it's gonna, I kind of knew this was going to happen, is that the three votes needed to be in the.
Maybe you need a formal bid process.
Thank you to be in there for us to see them and to have it side by, side, side by side, so we can look at it, you know.
Right, and I tried and tried to get Aptige uploaded into the packet, but.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about Aptige. Right now, the way that we're looking at, the residents look at, the only other company that we looked at is revised, and you know, something that we already have. I mean, according to what's in the packet. And normally, for things like that, go ahead. I feel like you just want to say.
I was gonna say, whenever I'm waiting my turn. So.
Go ahead.
In this situation, because, because the city has solicited other authors, if council's comfortable waiving the bid requirement, they can do that. But that would.
I just think that, I mean, personally, I think that just needs to be three. You know, not, I guess, a bit, but three comparisons that's in the packet that we can all see. I know that, you know, we've talked about it, but just to compare it to a comparison.
I mean, if we're doing a revamp, we had an upgrade a couple, two years ago or something, and I don't know. That, the website was worse, I think, but I don't know. We have a lot of residents in the city that do websites. We have, I don't know, I just think if we're going to be doing this, let's, you know, do something that's going to have an impact, not just somebody coming in rearranging our information that's already there. I don't know.
I think I'd still like a company to do it, now we can have a resident that can maybe be.
Well, I think companies, I mean, people have companies.
We can have a resident that can help with maybe volunteering to update the website or maintain it, but. Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna say, going back to Karen, Karen noticed that, and I had circled the same thing on last month's budget. We did pay revised $3,625. So is that the annual? Was there annual fee or did we pay for, so would we, if we switch companies, are we out that $3,625? You know, I would think that they would prograde that to us.
Any further discussion?
Yes, we've got two. We just, you can just say you want a third one.
Well, I kind of will prefer like two more without revised, like, or is that too much?
She does have, there is three, but it's just not, it's not an actual printout, because we went through, what was the other thing?
It was a webinar, a virtual meeting for MuniBit that I.
MuniBit, so there's, there are three, but it's just not in the package. But you want an additional one besides?
Just besides revised, if it's possible.
It's something that compares apples to apples, where it's just side by side.
So you're describing the scope of the project. So you're asking that the city send out an RFP and get no less than three bids? Yeah, I don't think we need an RFP for that. Right, I, I think we just need three bids. You know, we've got two. We just need a third one. We haven't, we, MuniBit wasn't good enough, but if there's a third one we can get, then.
Civic Plus is Aptige's highest competitor, so.
And you've used Civic Plus before, correct?
Civic Plus before.
And your thoughts on it relative to?
You get what you pay for. If you go lower on the scale, you probably wind up where you're at with Revise right now. And they come in and they just migrate your data from your current system to your new system. They don't go in and redo everything in there. So you want to pay on the higher scale to have more of the perks that go along with it. It's going to cost you upwards of the $20,000, $25,000. And when I was in Leslie, we went through that, and I think the highest quote I remember at that time, back in 2017, was $17,000, $19,000, something like that at that time, so.
And do you know if they have a customer app, resident app?
But you haven't, you haven't had, used it since 2017, though, right?
I have not used it since then, so it may have improved since then as well.
Well, I, you know, if you want to go through them, you want to get, what is it? Well, you said not with revised. Yeah, Municode.
Revise gives us a point.
Municode partners with Civic Plus to.
Okay, so that's the same, that's going to be the same.
That's the same.
Okay, and then you want one more?
Yes, but.
Is there an integration with the CRM? So that's what we had talked about. Are we just going with this website because we got the grant?
We're not going with that particular website. We are looking to upgrade the website because of the grant. We're looking to upgrade the website because the website, or the website, the website is not what we need it to be. It's not user-friendly. It's hard to find stuff on there. So the grant helps us accomplish getting a different website.
But is there something that's going, that we can integrate with the CRM that we can then communicate with residents? Know who we, we are communicating with?
For the website, it's not for CRM. So I don't think we can combine the two of those without going back and asking the MUDC if they would be okay with that.
I know, but we've talked about CRM, and so is there a way to coordinate things so that we're not with a new website? And that is having a function to.
Find a company that has integration with the CRM, does Aptige, is that what you're saying? Does Aptige have the opportunity, or have a opportunity to use the CRM with it?
Yeah, ready. Revise also, yes.
I think they would offer portions of it, not the entire package, but as I will ask.
Yeah, I mean, they're completely different functionalities. But nice thing.
But they are, they can be coordinated.
Some function of it.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
What are we voting on?
Um, the motion on the floor is to select Aptige's proposal.
Mayor Garrett.
No.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
No.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Motion denied.
Thank you. Next, we have the Set the Budget hearing fiscal year 2023, '24 and capital improvement plan for 2023 to 28, or June 26, 2023, at 7:30.
I don't know if you want me to speak anymore on it, or we have a draft budget we've been discussing. But in order to move forward with that, we have to. Uh, we have to draft budget. We've been discussing, but in order to move forward with that, we have to set the public hearing to adopt the final approved budget. Uh, by the end of this fiscal year. So that proposed date is June twenty six, twenty twenty three at seven thirty P M. It's on the fourth Monday of the month rather than the third Monday because the third Monday will be a holiday. It will be Juneteenth. So, um, we will not be meeting that evening and the numbers, uh, so far the total budget looks to be around eleven million, eight hundred thousand, three hundred seventy five dollars.
But I think before we can even take, um, then correct me if I'm wrong, before we can actually put this into motion, final discussions. For the budget should be now, right?
Well, there's, there's, obviously discussion opportunity for. At subsequent council dates, but you do need to schedule the public hearing.
Regardless of.
Regardless, in fact, you guys have more discussions because you don't have any more meetings before, uh, to be able to do that, so.
We we do have the June fifth meeting, um, the study session where more budget discussion can be held at that time. Um, as well as follow up after this evening, but for all later after this, as part of this meeting, but, um, yeah.
I would like to make a motion.
Motion to direct the city clerk to publish the notice of public hearing, uh, as. For the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget hearing for Monday, June twenty six, twenty twenty three at seven thirty P M.
Second. Spin move the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Um, city administrator report.
On the budget was my report for this one.
And have another part of the agenda. Hold on one second. No. I had it. City attorneys.
Uh, just real quick, I want to give you guys an update. Uh, the city did receive a complaint, a small claims complaint that was filed against it. By a resident disputing the assessed sidewalk assessment charges. I didn't, like, counsel aware of that. Just wanted to update you that today was the bench trial. On that claim, uh, the judge dismissed the claim against the city. There's no liability to the city for that.
Thank you. Uh, reports of boards, commissions, committees, first infrastructure group.
No.
Arcs and Rec Commission.
Just a reminder that this coming Friday is trivia night. Anybody who hasn't signed up, please go down and Monday through Friday, eight thirty, four thirty. And to check or leave a check with city. If you have signed up, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you guys Friday night.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Uh, nothing.
Simco report.
Nothing to report.
Southland Public School Board report.
Nope, I had reached out to James Jackson about a meeting, but hasn't got, hasn't got back with me.
Um, unfinished new business. That's where I probably put the budget question. If you have any more discussion for the.
Just one more.
Didn't you have more budget?
Oh, so then we'll be done with the budget once I ask this question. We're not going to.
No, you have another opportunity on June bit to ask more questions.
Oh, yeah, I just had the, just mine was on the water. Page that on. How it jumped, it kind of jumped all over the place and I, I feel like at several meetings we've discussed that the water issue is resolved. Am I misunderstanding that? Um. Here it is, page one twenty seven, historical comparison. Fiscal year seventeen eighteen, where we were at seven twenty one. Nineteen, we stayed around seven seventy five, twenty, we will jumped up to a million. We're back down to six twenty five, seven. Then last year we jumped to twenty not two thousand or two million nine hundred thousand and now we're back down to one eight. So I guess that. Feel like we're all over the board on that. Where are those numbers coming from?
Capital improvement.
Yeah, that's, that was most of a capital improvement. And we're, and that's why eighteen or one eight forty five, we still have money left to spend. Yep. If you look at page one twenty eight or one twenty nine online. Um, it will show you where your expenditures are at. If you go down to. Just underneath of the blue capital expenditures line where the subtotal water is. When it it shows you the expenditures, uh, without capital improvements and then how they jumped up to the two point eight billion with capital improvements and the one point six and onward and so on. So. And after twenty twenty four, though, we should have all of that completed. All the improvements, correct?
Till they tell us, you gotta uncover tank again.
Right, right.
Oh, this includes that tank?
Yeah.
That money's going into the tank from the water, not the sewer?
Yeah. Yeah, that's in the sewer, sewer reason.
In fact.
Sanitary retention. No, it's confusing. If you hear sanitary, you think clean, but it's, it's the exact opposite.
I think our water sale, the actual, the actual water sales, I think it's gone down, gone down over time if I remember correctly.
Yeah, um, and and our sales of our, um. Suits disposal also decreased because we don't have the excess water going through. Um, which they said that they weren't able to tie that in, so I don't understand how that happened, but. So all of this was just from the capital improvement from twenty one. Yeah, those are. Picking this last year, yeah, picking this year. And then it'll go down a little bit next.
It'll go down, yeah.
So if you look in this area here. Yes, that's where we had that double. Water replacement and water project or water main number two, we're just, okay. Right, and and we've been. Like, we had budgeted last year, the eight hundred and sixty thousand when they were looking at doing the water main or water meter replacement. And now that's dropped down to one thirty estimated for this year, uh, which it will not, you know, come out of this year, uh, because they're still working to get that started, but. It'll be taken from this fiscal year. It'll start after July one, um, the one hundred and thirty thousand for the technology upgrades on the water. Any other questions? I have one more.
Go ahead. Page one thirty five, one thirty six. Sewer Department expenditures, third paragraph. It says currently the city administrator or designee is in charge of monitoring and maintaining the tank and evaluating all weather patterns as they approach Oakland County. Is that still happening or didn't we turn that over to Oakland County already?
Yeah, that is Oakland County, so that can be taken.
Okay, so that needs to be updated. Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Um, public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Does anyone want to speak? Please come to the microphone or if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. If anybody would like to speak to be heard. Hearing none, I do have a letter that was sent in from Lauren Barris. Um. First, and they're all questions. What is the condition of the relationship between city council and city hall staff? Second one, have any city council members spent time at city hall to see what city staff does on a daily basis? Like shadowing and getting a firsthand understanding of the demands, needs of their job? Three, is there a common goal to work together for the city and its residents? If so, besides council meetings, how do you try to achieve that goal? Four, there is special training available to city council to prepare, educate and support you while you represent us. How long have each of you been on council and which council members have taken the training? Instead of some not answering, would Kelly or Bruce please answer for everyone? That's all that I have. There any, and these can be answered during, um. Mayor and council comments, but as the states are announced, just public comment. So anyone? Nope. Um, mayor and council comments. First one, I would like to apologize to everyone who received the last, uh, your town newsletter. Uh, there was a lot of discrepancies in there and I'm not sure what happened. I'm sure that my memo. Probably had to be retyped and maybe that's where the discrepancies came from, but I do want to acknowledge that I have heard from a couple of council people. And some residents that it looked like I didn't know how to. Read or write. And I'll just want to let you know that one. Um. Then to answer the questions, I've been on council for twelve years and I have gone to a training every year that I've been here. And then mayor for six years. That now includes. Two trainings per year that I've been going to. That's for me. Anyone else want to answer the question?
Everybody.
Yeah, I would say I'll go.
Go ahead.
I'm just, this is a resident that's asking it.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I've been, uh, I I believe for, uh, M M L conferences, uh, for Capcom conferences. Uh, three Z V A trainings, three planning commission trainings. Um, a couple of different M M L courses and several online classes ad hoc.
Anybody else say your turn? I mean.
I mean, well, I've been to training, um, probably could go to another one. I have one coming up.
Well, you are going Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, and and you went, you went to the initial M M L training, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. Barbara Karen, do you want to?
Yeah, but are we going to be, is this going to be open to other residents when they ask questions? We're going to be answering their questions that.
We normally do at the end when it comes down to the council comments.
We normally don't, but okay. I've been on for one and a half years. We have parliamentary procedure training. I have attended the trainings with the municipal attorney, Jerry Fisher. Um, on Open Meetings Act, on FOIA, those kinds of things. Um. And I have attended. Hours and hours and hours of other training as a, as a public servant, as an elected official, as a, um. Custodian of taxpayer dollars.
Barb, you don't have to answer if you don't want to.
I don't.
Okay, so next, um, you said you don't, right?
No.
Okay, so for, uh, is there any, uh, mayor and council comments? Hearing none.
Oh, okay. Why don't other people go first? I have two questions. Um.
Thank you.
Is anything, uh, going on with the eleven and Southfield Saco meter, um, and and our conversations with O H M? We haven't had an update on that in a while. I know there's been other things. More important, but I'm just curious if there's anything going on with that.
No.
Okay. Um, and then for, for Scott, um. Uh, has there been any conversations, uh, with with Sir now yet versus, uh, regarding, uh, some kind of letter of understanding?
No, I haven't gotten anything from him.
Okay. Are we wait, are we waiting for him?
Yeah, I thought you were going to put, put together a proposal of what he was looking for, so I could reach out.
Okay, and my other questions weren't answered, so.
Um, I forgot to ask about anything regarding the line. It is not a business that is a business yet, um, and they have been approached by multiple city people and. Um. Yeah, we're really trying to, but basically that they. You're on notice that it's not a business and that there's a lot of updates that would have to happen to that building. It's a change of use. We're not even sure it's allowed for the zoning code, so they are aware of that and and it is not a business, so.
Did you say longer man?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, take a motion to adjourn.
Mark to adjourn.
It's a second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. You all have a good night.